Councillors, to declare the meeting open at two minutes past one. We'll start by acknowledging the Kandamooka people who are the traditional custodians of the land which we meet. I'd also like to pay respect to the elders past and present, and extend that respect to any other Indigenous Australians who are present today. Just remind you of the fact that this meeting is being recorded in audio and video and is being livestreamed. Also remind you that parliamentary privilege does not extend to this chamber as it does to state and federal parliamentarians. And you're reminded to be cognisant of this in any of your comments which you may make during the course of debating this meeting. And also I'd like to remind you, and we do have two councillors dialing in, to use your microphone when speaking. And for any councillors or officers who are attending virtually to please use the mute button when you are not speaking. I think you know the drill on evacuation, but I just ask you to remain calm and follow the directions. Obviously, the exit is through the gallery doors down onto the stairwell in Bloomfield Street. Public conduct during meetings. All members of the public president of a meeting must, not without the prior approval of the chairperson, make any audio, video recordings or take any photographs, remain quiet and not disrupt the meeting in any way, not bring into the meeting any signs, placards or items that may cause a hazard or interfere with other persons who are present. We ask that you be suitably dressed and turn all your mobile devices to silent or leave the meeting to take any calls. As chairperson, it is my responsibility to warn a member of the public president at this meeting who is not complying with any of the requirements that I may withhold such warning, require that person to leave the meeting and not return for such a period as the chairperson decides, and that could include future meetings. Leave of absence. I have been advised by councillor Boglari that she is dialing in, so it will require a motion that councillor Boglari can participate in this move. Councillor Bishop, seconded councillor Gole, those in favour?
Aye.
That's carried. Now, I'm... Yeah. So councillor Hewlett, you haven't been accepted into the meeting at this point in time. I wasn't advised that you were dialing in, but I know now, so if I could have a mover and second to think. Thank you that councillor Hewlett can participate in our teams. Move councillor Bishop, second to councillor Birridge, those in favour? Those against? Councillor Boglari, are you in favour of that?
Yes, I can just hear you.
Okay. Well, that's carried then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder of declarations of prescribed conflicts of interest or declarable conflicts of interest. You have a list of all of those within your agenda, councillors. It's covered under section 5b of the Local Government Act. And of course, as I said, it's outlined in your agenda. Please be reminded that all interests need to be declared at a statutory meeting of council. And that means any prescribed or declarable conflicts of interest relating to an item being discussed at a non-statutory meeting needs to be declared at a general meeting or a special meeting, as we're having today, preceding the non-statutory meeting or workshop. A potential list of items to be discussed at all non-statutory meetings are made available to all councillors with each workshop agenda before the preceding general meeting, so this can be achieved. And of course, you can make those declarations anytime throughout the meeting and haven't been advised of any at this point. So with that, councillors, what I was intending to do was to perhaps get a mover and seconder and then have Dean speak to the items, so that in which case most questions hopefully would be covered. So if I could, just have moving the officer's recommendation, move councillor Hughes, seconded councillor Talty. With that, if I could just hold discussion so that Dean can give us a quick run-through of the multiple pages of the submission that we are providing to the state in regards to the draft South East Queensland regional plan. And of course, we have had discussions on this previously, so it's not new to many of you in the room. Over to you, Dean. Pardon me? Moved and seconded? We're going to just let Dean speak to it before we then speak to the motion councillor, my apologies. If we take the vote, then we don't have any debate at all. So my apologies. I just want a Dean to be able to have the motion live so that he can speak to it. While Dean is speaking, hopefully we can sort out the technology. Mine's working? I think mine's working. Yeah? You need to close down this microphone as well? Okay, councillors, just a quick motion for a five-minute adjournment. Move councillor Hughes, second to councillor Bishop, those in favour? Those against?
Aye.
Councillor Boglari? No, she can hear me though.
I'm an aye.
Thank you. That's carried unanimously, thank you. So councillors, with that, can I have a mover and second that we resume meeting proceedings? Move councillor Bishop, second to councillor Talty, those in favour? Those against? Councillor Hewlett?
I'm bold, thank you.
That's carried unanimously, thank you. All right, so back to where we started earlier. I'll just hand over to Dean, and that should hopefully answer most of your questions as we've had a workshop and gone through this with some detail a number of times now. So over to you, Dean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I will now run through, I guess, the 12 key points that we have proposed to be included in council's formal submission on the draft South East Queensland regional plans shaping SEQ 2023 update. So the first bell point is in relation to the expansion of the urban footprint. Our key points are: Redland city has significant dwelling capacity to accommodate the population growth forecast to 2046, and on this basis, there is no need to expand the urban footprint to accommodate additional residential growth. Second point: supporting the delivery of housing in the consolidation area should be prioritised over continued ad hoc greenfield development not supported by the Redlands coast community. It's the proposal that the state government should focus on unlocking dwelling capacity in the existing urban footprint by investing in key region shaping infrastructure and thereby ensuring that a higher number of new dwellings are provided in proximity to existing jobs, services, public transport and lifestyle opportunities. We also intend to reiterate that by expanding the urban footprint, it increases costs per council because there are higher costs associating with servicing new expansion areas. The second dot point is in relation to the identification of economic opportunities on the Redlands coast. The state government should identify the Cleveland CBD, the Toon to Harbour priority development area, the Redland Research Station and the Cleveland Health Precinct and adjoining industrial areas as a regional economic cluster. And if the state government does not support this position, it should restate this area's designation as an opportunity area. Given the significant increase in population growth anticipated in the draft regional plan, future industrial land supply on the Redland coast may be significantly constrained. Thereby, a further review of industrial land supply is expected to be required once employment projections to 2046 are finalised. The third point relates infrastructure planning and delivery. The draft shaping SEQ is proposing significant additional population and dwelling growth in the city without a commitment to upgrade the relevant state or utility provider infrastructure networks. At a bare minimum, the SEQUIP, which is an abbreviation for the South East Queensland Infrastructure Supplement and the South East Queensland Infrastructure Plan, should identify the infrastructure upgrades required to support this growth, the timeframes for when they'll be delivered, and they should be supported by funding commitments from the state government. More specifically, the infrastructure we would expect to be identified in these documents or noted would be the completion of planning investigations and delivery of the full eastern busway extension to Kapalaba, the finalisation of planning investigations to facilitate improved rail services, including the duplication of the Cleveland train line between Manly and Cleveland, high-frequency public transport connections between our key activity centres, upgrades to the state road network, and we've listed these as a minimum, but they're not an exhaustive list, a full upgrade for the Boundary Road, Duncan Road, Mount Cotton Road corridor from Thornlands to the Gateway Motorway, and a full upgrade for the Cleveland to Redland Bay Road corridor, as well as the full suite of community infrastructure such as schools, emergency services and the like, which would include things like hospitals, police stations, ambulance stations, fire stations and others. The other point that's intended to be raised is that council has undertaken ongoing assessment of its water treatment capacity. And to accommodate the level of growth anticipated in the regional plan, it would require a step change in wastewater treatment infrastructure for the city. To cite a specific example, council's wastewater treatment plan at Victoria Point will require a significant upgrade. This particular facility that's currently in operation will not be able to support the additional residential community identified at Southern Thornlands. And if the state government decides to proceed with the inclusion of Southern Thornlands in the urban footprint, despite the issues raised in, I guess, the subsequent sections that I'll talk about soon, the following matters would need to be considered: a determination of the capacity requirements, a completion of appropriate planning for the provision of this capacity for both the treatment and release systems, and also to obtain necessary approvals and licensing from the Department of Environment and Science for the upgraded treatment plants. In summary, and this is a position that's already on the public record from council's meeting resolution from the 19th of April, that council will not endorse a new regional plan without a commitment from the state government to deliver the requisite upgrades to the relevant state infrastructure networks. Fourth point in relation to Southern Thornlands is that the state government should reflect council's preferred future land use intents for Southern Thornlands in accordance with its proposed amendments. This area is intended to provide for significant, oh, sorry, to provide for future employment growth in the city, namely within the mixed industry business area, otherwise known as the MIBA, and the Transport Uses Precinct. The state government should remove Southern Thornlands from the urban footprint as there is no evidence basis to justify its inclusion for residential purposes. And council's longstanding policy intent is not to provide for suburban-scale residential development in this locality. In this regard, the following points are noted. The Queensland government has, as stated previously, not used an appropriate dwelling capacity figure for the Redlands coast, which appears to have been used to support the proposal to include Southern Thornlands in the urban footprint. On this basis, to further support this position, council engaged an independent consultant to examine Redland city's dwelling capacity. This has been independently validated as in excess of 20,000 dwellings, and this is noted to be a conservative capacity figure, which provides for 12, which will provide for up to 12,700 detached and 7,400 attached dwellings. And this is consistent, and it would demonstrate that we are able to accommodate the dwelling supply benchmarks in the draft shaping SEQ, which is 20,000 dwellings. To date, this shaping SEQ team has provided no evidence that any further planning investigations have been undertaken to determine the suitability of this area for a future urban community. By including this land within the urban footprint, it may increase the quantum of tantalised urban footprint land. No reasoning has been provided to date as to why the entirety of Southern Thornlands is required to be included in the urban footprint. The draft shaping SEQ project team have not considered alternative sites to Southern Thornlands that might otherwise be considered more optimal locations to accommodate future growth. The inclusion of Southern Thornlands in the urban footprint is inconsistent with the strategic intent of shaping SEQ, which seeks to encourage growth in the consolidation area and deliver a higher ratio of attached dwellings. In making a decision to prepare the Redlands housing supply and diversity strategy on council's behalf, the minister advised by written correspondence that one of the key reasons for taking this action was to deliver diverse housing options in the Redlands coast local government area. The decision to include Southern Thornlands in the urban footprint to accommodate what is predominantly detached dwellings would appear to contradict that stated intent. A large proportion of the land within Southern Thornlands that had previously been included in the urban footprint was removed. And the former planning minister stated reason in a media statement for taking this out of the urban footprint was to boost land available for koala habitat and protection. Obviously, since that eventuality in February 2022, there were significant changes to the regulation, and there was also a change to the, I guess, status of the koala, and it was elevated its conservation status from vulnerable to endangered. Also, large-scale development of this area has not only the possibility to impact on matters of national, it has the possibility of impacting on matters of national environmental significance, including but not just limited to koalas. So if despite the above, the state government proposes, intends to include Southern Thornlands in the urban footprint, it should be transparent with the community about the reason for doing this. Furthermore, it should ensure that the full cost for delivering infrastructure required to service the development is borne by the development components. Dot point five, Mount Cotton Village. Recognising the existing urban development in this area, further clarification should be provided outlining why Mount Cotton Village has not been included in the urban footprint in relation to Mangeraba, North Strabo-Colons. The final shaping SEQ should acknowledge the North Strabo-Colons Economic Transition Strategy, the state government's commitment to facilitate a transition of the island's economy away from mining to tourism, as well as the state government-Kandamooka Indigenous Land Use Agreement. Dot point seven in regard to dwelling forecasts and the multi-model. Further to the point made earlier that the dwelling capacity figures used were incorrect, council is requesting that the full suite of inputs and assumptions for the growth scenario underpinning the draft shaping SEQ as well as the multi-model be made available to council for review and validation. Dot point eight, planning for employment growth. The state government should update the employment projections to ensure they align with the 2046 planning horizon. The absence of this information and acknowledging that it will be finalised when the regional plan, the final regional plan is released, it should be made available to local government and the community so that they have an opportunity to provide meaningful feedback. Given the significant increase in the population growth anticipated in the draft shaping SEQ, it may be prudent that further review is undertaken of industrial land supply on the Redlands coast, potentially as part of the regional industrial land strategy to ensure employment growth objectives can be realised. Dot point number nine, engagement and public consultation. The arbitrary timeframe set for completing the draft shaping SEQ review has compressed the public consultation timeframe to 33 business days. This presents limited opportunities for the community to be meaningfully involved in the plan's development. Furthermore, two-to-hour in-person consultation events for the Redlands coast is considered to be inadequate. Dot point number 10, review of the capped infrastructure, sorry, dot point 10, review of the capped infrastructure charging framework. The state government should commit to undertake a full-scale review of the capped infrastructure charging framework, which undermines the long-term financial sustainability of local government and utility providers. Dot point 11, developing a comprehensive policy response to the housing crisis. The state government should develop a comprehensive policy response that includes a broad range of targeted interventions that will have a meaningful impact on housing supply and affordability. Some of these, which may form part of the regional plan under section part a, goals, elements, strategies, include the following: a funding commitment for public housing, command it with current levels of need; strategies and programmes that deliver affordable housing outside traditional housing models of provision, such as transitioning public housing stock to the community housing sector for redevelopment; legislative reforms that support the delivery of smaller and more affordable housing topologies, which might include, for example, broadening the scope of the Queensland Development Code to establish specific provisions that relate to smaller and micro lots; additional reforms that would potentially sit outside the scope of the regional plan review but are considered, I guess, a critical part of a comprehensive policy response, might include financial reforms, for example, taxation policy relating to stamp duty; regulatory interventions to prevent developer land banking and bring forward the supply of housing to market, for example, through reduced development approval timeframes, or financial penalties for landowners that do not develop land in a time limit. Targeted taxes that recover funding for public housing when land value uplift is delivered to landowners, for example, through upzoning or the inclusion of new land within the urban footprint. And the final dot point in relation to public and affordable housing targets, number 12. The proposal to include public and affordable housing targets in the final shaping SEQ is supported. However, supporting measures such as financial incentives are likely to be required to ensure the policy is implemented effectively. Sorry, good long spell.
I think that probably answered a great deal of the questions that might be asked, but I'm just going to go as speaker first. Councillor Hughes, speaker four.
Thank you, Mayor. In moving item 4.1, I would firstly like to thank officers, but particularly Officer Butcher. Thank you so much, Dean, for their attention to detail in this report. It is a 22-page report, and that does not include the attachments. That has a lot of information that can become quite confusing when you're flicking between pages. It does get a little confusing. As the report outlines, in October 2022, the Queensland government convened the Queensland Housing Summit to address the existing housing challenges and to look at our future housing needs with a focus on addressing the current housing crisis that we are all witnessing. Then, five months later, in March 2023, the department advised that the shaping SEQ 2023 update had commenced and would be a light touch, not a full review of the current shaping SEQ report. In responding to the light touch review's scope, this report focuses on the matters council intends to raise in its submission on the draft regional plan, including those previously raised in council's preliminary submission, which council endorsed at its 19th of April 2023 general meeting. It's noteworthy that the population projections for Redland city will see us grow from around 161,000 people in 2021 to about 212,000 people by 2046. That's approximately 50,000 new residents, or more than 30% growth on 2021 figures. And I note that there is no new infrastructure or funding and delivery commitments that appear in the shaping SEQ or SEQ infrastructure supplement to support this growth. There is also highlighted risk of future cost transfers to Redland City Council from the state, and I feel that this issue is worthy of further discussion. Before us today, councillors, is the council officer's recommendation that council resolves to make a submission on the draft shaping SEQ 2023 update as provided in attachment one of the report. And thank you, Dean, you've gone through the attachment for us. I did have a little bit more, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks councillor Hughes. Any speakers against? Any speakers against? Question, councillor Bishop?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a number of questions. The first is in relation to item three, sorry, item one, which is regarding the urban footprint. I just see clarity on page six and page 18, it mentions the Whitewater facility. And I just want to get clarity on council's intention regarding the urban footprint inclusion and previous South East Queensland regional plan we sought to include. So just want to get clarity on the state's position and our position on that, if I may?
I think you had that question answered previously, but I'm happy to...
I haven't asked that in recent...
Oh, you have asked it.
I'm just, it's clarity, seek clarity because it's written in the report, it's not in the officer's recommendation.
I'm happy to respond, but it has been answered previously.
Yeah, that's great. So yeah, councillor, you may recall through the workshopping process there were discussions about additional land to be included in the urban footprint, and this was one of the sites that was canvassed as potentially being a site that we might advocate to the state government to include in the urban footprint. The decision was ultimately, I guess, formed by council that that should not be progressed on that particular parcel of land, or those parcels of land. However, other requests for the expansion of the urban footprint were progressed. And for example, one of those was the inclusion of the German Church Road Business Park in the urban footprint. So yeah, I guess it was the resolution of council not to progress with inclusion of that particular area in the urban footprint at this point in time.
Thank you, that's great. And I agree with that because it fits with the sustained thing, the policy, and it also fits very much with the community's expectations.
Have another question, councillor?
Yes, thank you. In relation to point three, the population of South East Queensland, I'm just going to go more broadly. The population is proposed to increase by 2,161,800 extra residents. Have we got a view on the capacity for water to be available? Potable drinking water with dams and challenges, there are issues to deal with that. Should we make a comment on that? I believe that it's important that we reflect the concerns of the limits when we got down to 8% on water at the last drought. I just think that's a matter that's worth following up. Have we got any position on that? I know it's South East Queensland-wide, but I think it does relate to our residents in future and one of the reasons why we want to constrain the numbers of population.
Yeah. Thank you councillor Bishop. So if you look at attachment one, dot point three, oh, sorry, under item three, dot point one, the point made, or the point proposed to be made to the state government is that the draft shaping SEQ is proposing significant additional population dwelling growth in the city without a commitment to upgrade the relevant state or utility provider infrastructure networks. So it's broadly, in my view, broadly included in that comment. However, you could choose to draw specific attention to a particular asset or concern, for example, potable water supply.
I think it's covered, and you can probably drill down to power and energy and all those sorts of things.
I raise it because it is an infrastructure limitation, and I think it's something that's critical to the survival of our species, so it's important.
Another question?
Yes, thank you. In relation to the request for state upgrades on the various state-owned roads, I'd just like to request, should it be considered that we, I know we discussed Rickett Road, but should it be considered to be taken over as a state road in terms of advocacy?
I think that's another opportunity down the track, it's not one that we...
I just wondered if we want to have a position on it because we know there are limits because it's on the fringe of Brisbaneshire, and it's definitely an issue for our residents.
Thank you, we're referring to the state-owned roads. I think we probably should have raised that maybe three or four weeks ago when we had the discussion.
Yeah, well, I think we're still having the discussion while we happen to, you know, so I just, I think it's worth...
Well, the officers have written a report based on the discussions you've had as well, so...
Yeah, okay. It may be an advocacy option down the track. I note with, actually, I'll leave that. I do wholly support the consultation, and I believe that meaningfully engaging...
Questions, councillor, there's just questions, councillor, you're not talking to the item, it's been, you have to question. So you have no further questions, I think councillor Gole is...
Yeah, I'll just...
Ready to ask some questions also.
Thank you.
Councillor Gole, you have a question? Please keep it as a question.
Yes, thank you, through you, Madam Chair, to Dean. Could you just re-clarify the public consultation time again? Is that the state conducting their public consultation? Because I don't believe, and I would guarantee everyone in the room doesn't believe, that that's actually long enough to have the community have a say...
So that was mentioned in Dean's points, but just can you...
It was, but can we seek to extend that public consultation time?
We actually did, and we doubled it. We actually did, we only had one session organised for two hours, and as a result of myself at the Regional Planning Committee saying how ridiculous that was for the number of people we were expected to absorb, they doubled it, which meant we had two, not one.
Because I don't think that's fair to the community, that the state's mandated that this is a set period of time and it's such an important document.
And Dean did actually refer to that in the points. And if I could also say that the state do intend to review, do a full review at some point, and because it's their light touch apparently, so I guess there'll be an opportunity for further consultation down the track.
Yeah, it's a light touch with dramatic consequences. But my second point, or question, sorry, is could you just articulate through you, Madam Chair, to Dean? If you remember councillor, some time ago, we actually asked the state to consider the eastern side of Spring Acre Road to be 10,000 square metre lots. What was the feedback from the state on that, please? In relation to creating a rural living precinct?
Yeah, so this goes back to council's proposed major amendment for Southern Thornlands. So I canvassed in, I guess, earlier a mention of the MIBA and the Transport Uses Precinct, but there was also a proposed rural living precinct, which proposed allowing subdivision down to a minimum lot size of one hectare. That amendment was provided to the state government, and although it's been put on pause pending the finalisation of the housing strategy, the preliminary feedback received by the state planning department is that they weren't going to support that proposal. Yeah, so they, I guess, in a nutshell, they said they don't believe it was consistent with the planning principles or the urban footprint principles in the regional living area, or some of the principles that are reflected in the regional plan. And essentially that by allowing that subdivision to occur, it would prejudice its potential future use for urban purposes beyond the life of the current regional plan.
Thank you, it's just in relation to that still.
Thank you councillor Bishop. Another question?
Yeah, so they definitely won't allow 10,000 square metre lots to be butted up against what are already 16,000 square metre lots and continue that acreage estate. They would rather put... They would rather put small lots up against large acreage estates, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I guess the, the difficulty is that while it's proposed for inclusion in the urban footprint, the areas otherwise referred to as southern dornlands, we don't have specific details on ultimately what will be delivered in that area. There's, there's been discussions, and this is on the public record, that we've met with EDQ about the possibility that everything um potentially declared a potent, uh, a priority development area, and there's talk of potentially accommodating up to seven thousand residential allotments. So it could be the case that that is the um land use that's ultimately realised there. Um, but we're just not sure, unfortunately, councillor.
Thank you. I just don't think that, again, that's fair to those acreage lots that are already existing. Thank you.
All right, thanks councillor. Everyone's asking questions. Um, councillor Boglary, you had your hand up next. Question?
Yes, uh, thank you. And I just remembered when councillor Bishop mentioned Ricketts Road, um, we mentioned that being a BCC road, um, it's going to be hard to get the state to take it. Um, but the Redlands Resource Station, um, recognition of economic opportunities, Redlands Research Station. Is that the Macarthur Street land? Can I have clarity on which land we're talking about there? I, I've forgotten, sorry.
It'd be the one on the corner of Delancy and, and Fanucan.
Yeah, it's just.
The state, the state-owned, the state-owned land.
That is, yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, councillor Beridge, and then councillor Talty, questions?
Yes, thank you, madam chair, and through the chair, to officer Dean. Uh, you touched on the koalas, but um maybe I missed it in the report. Did we cover in our report the concerns where the draft update says it aims to protect and enhance the regional biodiversity network and states' regional biodiversity values will be investigated and refined by the local government for protection? We have discussed this in workshops, but I just don't know if we've covered it because uh the local governments, which is the right fund, the councils, do not have access to the full range of protective measures available to the state. And all the regional biodiversity value and corridors need to be dealt with as a matter of state environmental significance.
Your question councillor Berry?
Yes, but so to ensure they attract stronger protection and coordinated planning. And that is the state's commitment under the Nature Conservation Act. So have we covered that enough? That it's not our responsibility, but under the uh Nature Conservation Act, it is the state's responsibility. Have we covered that enough in our report?
We certainly covered off on koalas, um, Dean?
Yes.
Yeah, look, it's, it's difficult. Uh, I mean, I think you're asking whether we should potentially go into further detail and outline, you know, more specific matters to be raised. So obviously, it went in the um attachment one. Um, I simply tried to synthesise what was a twenty-two page report into a four-page document under twelve headings. It's possible to expand those points. However, um, I think the key point being raised here is that there are not just koalas, but there are um other matters of state environmental significance that exist in this location, um, as well as potentially matters of na- matters of national um environmental significance. And that um parks back to that um reference being made to the EPBC referral, and that potentially being requirement if this area is ultimately included in the urban footprint and designated for a future urban community, that that process still needs to be followed. So it's the view of officers, and this has been articulated in the report in response to that. Um, I guess it was, in our view, premature to include it in the urban footprint because um uh those investigations should have been fully prosecuted before being proposed, before this area was proposed to be included. Um, so hopefully that provides some comfort that we are covering off in those points in the submission.
And my discussions with the Australian Conservation Foundation's um CEO pretty much articulated that as well. So that might be interesting to see what their, what their submission to the regional plan is. Councillor Talty, you have a question?
I do, madam mayor. I just wonder if the officer can um provide any um overarching information. Um, it's been commented on that the timeframe was quite short for the public submission, and that it's a light-touch review. But it seems to me that in Redland, specifically, it is not particularly light-touch. It's a pretty significant change. So are we unique? Is this light-touch review quite light-touch in other council areas, but Redlands is being treated quite differently? Is that, i- is that a fair assessment, do you think?
Um, I think, well, if you look at the pure figures, so the population is anticipated to grow from three point eight million, and that's based on twenty twenty-one figures, to six million by twenty forty-six across the region. And obviously, Red, Redlands um will accommodate a portion of that growth, and that growth is fairly significant, given we'll grow by approximately fifty thousand people over that time. And your question is about the light touch. I think there are significant implications for a lot of, a lot of the LGAs. Um, however, because I wasn't, yeah, really involved in um the review of how the regional plan impacted on those, it's difficult for me to answer those questions. Um, but yeah, when we come back to that light-touch review and the consultation timeframes, um, because it was considered an amendment to the regional plan, that allowed them, I guess, the state government, to undertake, I guess, a shorter consultation period than otherwise would have been the case. Um, so they ran the consultation period from the third of August to the twentieth of September, that's thirty-three business days. Had they undertaken, I guess, a wholesale review of the regional plan, I think the nominal figure and, or the figure uh that would have been required to go out for consultation for around sixty business days. So, I, I guess the point being made here, by doing the light-touch review, it limited the opportunity for the community to have that longer consultation period. And, um, yeah, ultimately, we only got those two, two-hour in-person sessions um to discuss that with the community, which is not a lot considering this has significant implications for the future growth of the city.
So councillor Talty, if I could just add, because I sat around the table and took notes through all the um various areas that we're experiencing great growth. And we've got to remember that our size and scale, probably compared to some of the bigger councils, um, we're already constrained because, you know, we have the bay on one side and the creek on the other, and um, but we had the second largest uh increase in urban footprint hectares in the whole region, uh, only surpassed by Moreton Bay region, which is a much, much bigger area as well. Um, so I think it's fair to say that if I was to weigh it up with all the others, and, and I, you know, most mayors had concerns, but we probably, for the size of our city, um, the increase probably, uh, was, I would think, um, m- more than what we would expect in a light-touch review.
So if I can just have a supplementary question, madam mayor. Um, given that it was a light-touch review and the impacts of the changes that are proposed seem far more significant than a light-touch review, and for us, this is a twenty-five to thirty percent increase in population. Um, is there a process through this where we can um challenge in some way and say to the state, well, you started off with a light-touch review, but what you're actually implementing is not light-touch, so you should go back and do more consultation? Do we have an opportunity to do that, or is that simply something we say in this submission?
Well, I think if you wanted to, councillor, you could um add, you could amend the motion to actually ask for further consultation. But I don't hold out much hope, but I think you could probably do that if you wish to amend the motion as it stands, just to um put it on record. But, yeah, it's nothing stop. Uh, we've actually, so to be clear, I think we actually got an extension, local government got an extension. Um, yeah, so we, we have tried very hard to make the um mayors have tried very hard to make it clear that that wasn't sufficient consultation for the size of the growth that we've been told to expect as a reaction to the housing crisis, which this will not solve because this is a long-term plan, not a short-term plan, which we need for the crisis. Okay, I've got councillor Mackenzie. Councillor Boglary, you've still got your hand up. I'm just double checking. You haven't got another question? I'm not gonna go around for more questions, councillors. Um, we've had lots of chats on this, but councillor Mackenzie. Sorry? Pardon me, councillor Boglary? Okay, now you've got a thumb up and your hand up, thank you. Thank you. Bit of humour for the day. Councillor Mackenzie, question?
Um, thank you. Does the state have a definition of what a light-touch review is, or can they just say, oh, yes, we're doing this review and it's just light-touch?
Uh, no, so that was, I guess, a, a name that was a, assigned to the review. So under, so there's an obligation um for the state government to undertake a re- review of the regional plan at setting tools. And they can either undertake a full set, a full, a ho- whole review, holistic review of the document, or they can do an amendment. They opted for the amendment pathway, which um allowed them, I guess, because they've set an arbitrary timeframe to finalise the regional plan and the SEQ document by the end of the year. So obviously, doubling their consultation timeframe runs the risk of pushing past that. So, um, yeah, that, that sort of explains why they use that term.
Thank you. Councillor Bishop, is there another question? Because I, we have, I, I'm trying to use efficient time here in the standing orders, quick question?
Yeah, thank you. Um, this is the one I skipped over earlier. I just think it's worthwhile raising under dot point six, Mingeraba North Stradbroke Island. We know that there are huge cultural and environmental si- uh, um ecological sensitivities on the, on a sand island, and the delivery, challenge of delivering infrastructure is a concern. Should we have anything else in there to just uphold the um our understanding and the state's realisation of the extra costs associated with developing on that land? And the cul- the, the cultural and ecological challenges that we have as deliverers of civic infrastructure? Because it's, I, I, I know that we're touching here on the um, the North Stradbroke Island Economic Transition Strategy, which is mostly Dunwich related.
Which includes, and which includes um the One Mile, et cetera. So I think it's actually already covered in, in the um.
It includes One Mile, but where I'm concerned is that we know that there is challenges on a sand island with geotech and engineering and so forth. And the costs associated, I'm not sure that the, of, the, the state is aware of the limitations.
I think they are.
They.
Because it's, I certainly have mentioned that in, in over many years.
Here we are making a document, I'm just asking the officers if we should include something extra um to just reinforce that.
Depends how long you want the list to be, but I think it's, it's a broad strategic response to a broad strategic regional plan review, so.
I just don't want us to get caught out, you know, if, that's why I'm asking, yeah.
Well, we, let's face it, the ETS, um, and One Mile is already part of that discussion that's occurred many years ago. So I don't think us addressing it again um is, is going to make a huge amount of difference.
With potential releases of other land and the costs associated with the infrastructure.
Yeah, so unfortunately, didn't raise it earlier with, um, in our discussions, but I don't, I think it's covered in regards to the ETS, but Dean, I'm happy for you to respond.
Oh, look, yeah, so we, so we cover it at a, at a higher level when we're talking about um integrating um land use planning and infrastructure delivery. But I would say that, that, that particular advocacy piece is being delivered through another, I, I guess, process. Yeah, so through the TLPI, council has, um, I, I guess, advocated, as, as you've suggested there, to ensure that um the future infrastructure required to service um the areas which we understand to be transitioning across into the ownership of the um quantum market people in time. Um, so our representations have sought to ensure that the state government does, I, I guess, ensure that it funds infrastructure to facilitate that development to occur, and that those costs are not borne by um local government rate pays. So that message has been delivered to them previously.
Okay, thanks councillor Hughes. Would you like to sum up now? I don't think there's any more questions. Over to you. Thanks. Mentioned one thing uh earlier that you mentioned, sorry councillor Hughes, you talked about no infrastructure being um highlighted uh in the light-touch regional plan. I do wanna recognise that the metro, the eastern metro has been acknowledged in there. Um, so I just wanted to, without sort of, you know, some poke. Yeah, so the, the metro is, the eastern bus, eastern busway slash metro slash, slash transit way is actually acknowledged in the supplement. No, well, it's actually acknowledged in the regional plan, but potentially, yes, that's how it will be funded.
Okay, thank you. In, in summing up, my concern is not our city's population, nor our dwelling numbers. It's the dwelling conditions that may come from this update that have me really worried. What are our future lot sizes? Setbacks between each property? What does housing diversity really mean for our homes and families that are settling into Redlands into the future? Another hot topic of concern and currently most frustrating to residents right now is car parking. It's important to understand what that could and will look like into the future. Also, and most importantly, our city needs supporting infrastructure, and we've talked about that today a lot. That means sewer, parks and road upgrades. It also means that we got sporting fields that are already at the top of our priority list will need to be further supported. Redlands is unique. We are our own city. We are trying to balance the need for housing diversity that welcomes our newest residents, that then merge with our existing residents, ensuring that every family in our city has equity. We need to be able to park a car, play in a park that is walking distance, catch public transport, seek an opportunity for local employment. And I strongly recommend that councillors support our offices in their recommendation for this formal submission. This is our opportunity to work with the state government as they ref- review and respond to councillor submission. For our part of our naturally beautiful and very dynamic SEQ region, that together we truly strive to get the best outcome for our residents as we combine to shape SEQ, that's South East Queensland, that's our Redland City into the future. Thank you.
So councillors, um, before I close the meeting and before I take the vote, just reminded for you to sign your attendance sheets on diligent boards, and I just wanted to give you a little bit more time because a couple of people haven't done that yet. Um, so with that, if there's no further, I will put the motion, those in favour? Those against?
Aye.
No.
So just, so we have, so just to be clear, those in favour?
Aye.
Those against?
Aye.
Okay, so for those in favour, councillor Mitchell, councillor Goley, councillor Edwards, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Beridge, councillor Bishop, councillor Williams, those against, councillor Hewlett. So councillors, have I given you enough?
Excuse me, I was aye.
Oh, sorry, pardon me, councillor Boglary, yeah, councillor Boglary, my, sorry.
I was positive.
Yes, she supported it, yes.
I was in favour.
Yes, 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 I heard that. Yes, it's ten one.
Right. I was a good little pirate.
So, sorry about that, councillor Boglary. Um. I will pu- I will close the meeting now after you've signed your diligent boards attendance sheet at uh four minutes past two, and thank you everyone for your questions.
I can't sign my diligence sheet.
Yes, that's fine. We, we understand that, but we will note.
Thank you.
We will note that yourself and councillor Hewlett didn't attend in person, but we're here on teams. Thank you. All right, thanks councillors, thanks.